Let me start before we get into the public comment section. Two things first, I'm sure as you all came in, you noticed that we do still have signs up on the building asking visitors to please wear masks indoors. We do this as a way of protecting our students, our staff, and their families. So I'd ask you all, please, if you're here and you're not wearing a mask, if you wouldn't mind, please putting a mask on. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have some out just front?
Yeah, there's a supply up above. The board has just come out of a workshop. I'll just report briefly on that, where we looked at the strategic plan that was put in place two and a half years ago. And after having reviewed that plan in light of our new expanded mission statement, we've agreed that we should proceed with the plan as written. There's going to be a major data taking in the spring to assess progress against that plan, and at that time, we will revisit in workshop. Okay, that brings us to the public comment section of the agenda. We have a couple of people who have signed up to deliver comment. If those folks wouldn't mind coming down to the microphone, please begin your comments with your name and the town in which you live, and then proceed into your comments. Thank you.
Steinhauer Nineteen Hill Drive in South Berwick. Does the Marshwood School System Board, do we belong to the National School Board Association?
I think there's like an automatic membership. Yeah.
We do.
Yes.
Okay, so my first question is, has or will the Marshwood School System leave the National School Board Association, like our neighboring state of New Hampshire and 15 other states so far, and why or why not? My second question is, did or will Marshwood School System be participating in the main integrated youth health survey? And if so, did parents have the option to opt in? Did they have to opt out? And were parents informed about the content of the survey?
So I'll take the first question first. I was not aware that there are states that are dissociating themselves, if we can put it that way, from the National School Board Association?
Eighteen, eighteen so far.
Yeah, okay. I know of no such movement in the state of Maine. There's been no talk about it from the Maine School Board Association. So I would have to say the answer is as of right now, there's no plan to. As regards to the second question, I...
Yeah, my understanding is there is a opt-in page that goes onto families, and so, yes, yep.
And are they informed of the content of the survey?
I believe that's part of that welcoming of the letter that's in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Jason Fitzpatrick, South Berwick. Just requesting some additional data on your COVID page of the website. Could we get some clarification on the COVID data listed today, the state's 32 cases? Could you provide further breakdown on whether these were caught through your mitigation programs, or if this was through other means, and also in the pool testing? Are these positives included in the 32 cases? Or also the positive, of the positives in the pool testing? Could you provide some data as to the severities of these, if they became symptomatic, or to what degree hospitalization or whatnot? Actually, it would be great to get that info across the board, all cases that we found, just so we could see how things are working in our favor. Thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? When you talk about the first part, the mitigation strategies, are you talking about like what's caught through pool testing, or what's caught through identification?
It states you had found 32 cases within the school system. Just wanted to see if that was caught through your programs, or if that was through other means, you know, there was symptomatic people, and they went on their own and got tested, whatnot.
Let me, I'll dig into that to find out what we can share. I don't think we can share the last part, just from a confidentiality standpoint around whether people were hospitalized and things like that, but I...
Even in general terms of...
I don't believe so, but I will get some more information on it.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
So how would we find out the answer to that? Would you have emailed Jason, or...
Jason?
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I mistook the name. The gentleman that just spoke. The gentleman that just...
To get the feedback, I will talk to our school nurse to find out whatever the school is doing. And certainly, if you wanted to shoot me an email, I'd be more than happy to respond.
There we go. Thank you.
Awesome. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm sorry.
I was thinking Judy Doran in my mind.
It was Jason, right? Did I mess that up?
It was.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Thank you both for your comments. Okay, that brings us to the report of the secretary. May I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of our last meeting?
I move we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, October 6th, 2021.
I'll second Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Any questions or comments about those minutes?
I did a brief review, and I didn't see anything major.
Ditto.
And that's a five-page report, so that's amazing.
As is often the case recently, we, it was very content-rich, so.
Is that me, you guys?
Okay, and if there are no further questions, then Hall and Theater, C50. Thank you very much. That brings us to the report of the chair. The only item on the agenda for that is the fact that we did finally have our first town officials' meeting on October 13th. Jen, you were present. Would you mind giving a readout on that?
Sure. Yep, so this is the first meeting that we've had in a while, and both Elliott and South Berwick have interim town managers, and both are in the process sort of towards the end stage of finding new permanent town managers in both towns. So, let's see, for Elliott, they talked a bit about, actually, both towns talked about how they've had an owl system that they've been using to conduct a hybrid model with their town meetings, so they've been able to use a remote option, and that that's been working good. They talked about their masking policies in town. They talked about their ARPA funds, taxes. There's a new assessor in Elliott, and also, they talked about Elliott Festival Day, and that there was a time capsule that was going to be buried for the next 50 years. That's kind of cool. South Berwick, trick-or-treat is on. They were also discussing the best years for their ARPA funds, also their mask reviews. They have a new library director that's going to be starting. There is a mailbox outside the town hall for absentee ballots. Again, talked about the light by the high school. Out here at the high school, there'll be a meeting with the DOT about the project and a traffic study. And then Mr. Caverly reviewed masking and pool testing, talked about the rationale and the requirements around quarantine, and how that's become much more confusing even than last year with the new CDC guidelines, and clarified that those things are all driven by the CDC guidelines, not a school district decision. Talked about potentially having a vaccination clinic for kids under 12, if and when that becomes available. Recognized Lieutenant Burbank's retirement. And Mr. Caverly talked about meeting with Chief Moya for the SRO at the middle school. And that's where I stopped taking notes.
The only other note was the next meeting is on 11/10.
Excellent.
I actually did want to add, that meeting you mentioned with the Department of Transportation around the light in front of the high school is actually scheduled for this Friday. It's 10:22.
Excellent.
So that's coming up shortly. I know that's of interest to many folks.
Thank you for that.
Sure. Thank you, Jen.
Yep.
All right, that brings us to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. My first is just a brief COVID update. I received some news tape from the Maine Center for Disease Control that Marshall Middle School had reached outbreak status, which means we have three active cases. You know, that meant something very different, you know, 18 months ago. So really, for us now, it's really asking the CDC to take a deeper look and kind of monitor what's happening within the school. We don't need to change anything. We're not changing, you know, people are not going remotely. We're staying in school. We're continuing to do what we do, but just to make people aware of that. To get out of outbreak status, you can't have any positive cases for 28 days. And so, once schools are typically in the outbreak status pool, they tend to stay in there because statistically, it's probably going to happen. And so, I have a meeting on Friday just to follow up with them and talk about the work that we're doing. Our mitigation strategies are still in place as far as the cleaning that will take place. You know, we do the deep cleaning on a regular basis anyway, and so, it's just kind of a formality, but I wanted people to be aware of that. I shared that in a letter this evening with the community.
And just to clarify, outbreak status doesn't necessarily mean that it was a school...
That's correct. That's correct.
That it was contracted at school necessarily?
Yeah, it has to be a certain...
It can be three separate cases?
Yeah, three separate cases. It has to be a certain type of test as well. The PCR test does not qualify for the outbreak status. It has to be the antigen test in order to qualify. So there is some subtleties to that. So we will still meet, you know, we will continue to do what we're doing, but just want to make people aware of that. The other part, I had a superintendent across the state of Maine had a meeting with Dr. Shaw on Monday, just to try to get an update as to where the state was. You know, there's a lot of questions that were asked. I think some concerns that we as superintendents shared, particularly around the logic behind contact tracing on a bus was one thing that came up. It's really tough for us to get our heads around, and trying to get some clarity from the CDC on that. Also, just, you know, the pool testing, getting clarity on that, and then home test kits and those types of things. So a lot of questions around how that works from the CDC perspective. He talked a great deal about the hopefulness that the 5 to 12 vaccination will be approved in early November, and that he hopes that that vaccination will be ready for distribution in the state of Maine, you know, in that second week of November. And so, obviously, you know, we will have a vaccination clinic, as we did last year. If those are interested, obviously, that's an optional choice. One of the things that we have to be mindful of, though, if we were to do that with younger age students, we'd have to do that a little bit differently, so offering some off-hours where an opportunity where parents could come with their children to be able to do that, rather than, some people wouldn't be comfortable having a young child getting a vaccination without the parents there. So some work will have to do together. We worked with Northern Light Medical Services last year, and so that's, you know, continue that partnership. So, you know, my hope, after listening to Dr. Shaw talk, is that, you know, January, things will start to loosen up for everybody. This has been a long haul, and I think we're all feeling it, and just trying to be mindful of all these different stressors that we're trying to balance. And so, you know, meeting with superintendents, one of the questions that we really struggle with is, you know, with the mask mandate, I understand that, but what's the exit strategy look like? You know, and just trying to get some clarity around that. And so, we're working hard to get that answer. Our superintendent's group is working hard to get that answer because I just think we need to know, what does that look like, so we can be able to kind of plan around that and be able to set some goals around that, because right now, it just seems to be kind of out there right now. And so, we're trying to get some clarity. So, very good conversation. I think it created some other questions, but I think there was also some tough questions because, you know, schools are really in a unique spot right now. And so, we're just trying to make sure that we're doing the right thing, but also passing the straight face test when we can. The second thing I wanted to report on is that, an update on the Marshall Middle School School Resource Officer hiring process. I have been meeting with Chief Moya, Officer Upton, and Principal Creach over the last couple of weeks to talk about a process of how do we hire a school resource officer, and trying to make sure we get the right candidate. I mean, ultimately, it's important to note that that's a police officer that's being hired, and that ultimately will be the Elliott Police Department's decision who gets the position. But I, you know, Chief Moya has just been so collaborative, and wants to show that we have the right fit for everybody, so we're all successful. And so, we've created a process that we're going to include parents, we're going to include students, we're going to include kind of a police oral exam that they're, kind of more their type of work that they do. And then there will also be a second round of interviews with Chief Moya and myself. So we're looking forward to it. Some really difficult questions. I think it's really important. Some written responses to be able to find out about communication skills. So we're looking forward to the beginning of that process on Tuesday. So also Sue will be joining us as well, so. We have gotten a number of phone calls and questions about our building's use this winter. And so, in the past, you know, you'll see cars lining up around the corner, you know, at the middle school or at the elementary schools, you know, looking to play basketball or wrestling tournaments and those types of things. And so, how do we manage that in the midst of a pandemic? And so, my plan at this point in time is that, first and foremost, it is critical that we give kids an opportunity to be involved. That is the most important thing. And so, equal to being safe. And so, what I have said is that we are looking to begin that the Monday after Thanksgiving. There would be an opportunity that if people do want to be vaccinated, that they have the opportunity to do that, and we can get that underway. And in addition, we can also get the high school and middle school winter activities up and rolling, because that's going to take some effort to be able to do that. We are going to limit the games to singular games and asking that things be spaced out. And so, let's just say if typically, it's a 45-minute game, and the games are at eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12, maybe we do eight, nine, 15, 10, 30, you know, 11, 45, one o'clock, to be able to spread the crowds out a little bit, to be able to keep the contamination or the potential contact tracing down. The other thing that's really important is that the organizations are clear with families on, they have to follow the CDC community standards. That's not a school standard, and being able to communicate that in front with people. I think it's important to be transparent. You know, I will use the example that Principal Scully used with the prom of just saying, here are the facts, folks. If there is a positive case, this is what it looks like. Because I just don't want people to be unprepared, and so, being able to communicate that with people. So I had a conversation with one of the groups today. I will create a kind of a checklist to be able to let everybody know the rules that we're going to play by. But the days of having, you know, the big tournaments at the middle school, you know, my son played little guys' basketball, and the 45 teams at the Great Works School, we're not going, that's not going to happen this year. So maybe a travel season may be able to happen, you know, when it typically happens in February, but we'll see where we're at at that point in time. But we're going to counter, keep it in a little bit smaller scope, but we do want to support, you know, our kids being actively involved.
Great.
Okay? So, last week, we received a very good question from the public, and it was around policies and how does the board get feedback on policies from the community? And so, going back to as long as I've been here, what has happened is that there's a first reading, and that when that first reading happens, there's a paper copy of the policy that was given out at that first meeting. There is a second reading at the next meeting, and there's a paper policy kind of given out at that meeting. And so, the question was, if I'm a member of the community, how do I, how do I have a chance to look at the document to be able to give feedback on the document? That was the question, which is a very valid question. And so, what I did was kind of create a flow chart, and this is a draft, you know, and this is a change. I just want to be clear that there's some changes here, and it's a matter of, you know, of the board making a decision how they would like to go forward and what we would like to do. But really, it first starts with kind of identifying what are the reasons why we do policy changes. And so, kind of, you know, five big, you know, big idea categories. There might be a change in federal or Maine law, creation of new federal or Maine laws, might be elimination of federal or Maine laws, or we are required to do kind of a systematic review every five to seven years of our policies to make sure they're up to date. And then there might be other. There might be other circumstances where we may not have a policy that's recommended to us by MSMA, and we want to have that policy. Typically, with policies, you don't just kind of create policies on a whim. There's a legal standing, there's justification for it. It's not just you kind of just build something out of thin air. Everything is typically a code. It's a very confusing code, but there's a form that has to kind of, it has to follow. So it's not, just not willy-nilly. The other thing that gets really confusing, and just for clarity, is that the board makes policy. Schools do not make policies. And so, I know we use those terms interchangeably at times, and so, sometimes people will say there's a policy around students having to be at Marshall High School by nine o'clock if they want to play in a basketball game in the afternoon. That's a school procedure that's in place. That is not a board policy, you know, or it could be a board policy. But my point is, is that that would be set by the board, not by the school. So how the school manages things is a different situation. So I think that's important to talk about. So we start with a policy committee where we have three members that come to a policy committee meeting. It's going to involve administrators. It might involve, in many circumstances, over the last couple, you know, last year or so, a district nurse representative would come to those meetings as well, and there might be other people. So for instance, recently, we did a review of booster groups. And so, if booster groups are involved, we would ask Mr. Boswell, who's the director of athletics, to come to that meeting, because obviously, it would make sense as he would be responsible for it. We meet monthly, September to June. The policy committee looks at policies presented during the meeting. The committee reviews the recommendations for policy changes, and that's typically presented by Maine school management, which is a kind of a group that we work with at the state level, and also Drummond and Woods, who is our attorney that handles our school law piece. So that there's two different sources that we might... So that there's two different sources that we might get information. And so last week, and I think there's a second reading today, there's been some changes on the restraint and seclusion laws. And so we got a notice from Governor Woods. So there's some changes here. We've had, you know, they've done a free kind of teleconference to kind of go over all the different changes. And then we create the policy around those changes. They give us a sample policy to make sure we're ensuring that we follow the law. And so then that policy would then go to the policy committee, so we go to the board for a first and a second reading. So a draft policy is presented at the first meeting and that would be for the first reading. And what would happen is that you would get that. You would present it at the first meeting. A paper copy would be put out at the first meeting. And then we would have our discussion. And then when we go to a second reading, there would be an opportunity for public comment before we had the conversation about the policy to be able to get public feedback before that second vote is taken. And so that's a little bit of a change. Now, one of the things that we could do is that we could make, and I'd like to do, is I would like to recommend that when we do post our agenda, we post a supporting material with it so that people get a copy of that second reading policy so that they can see it ahead of time so they can have a chance to look at it. The other, you know, we could do it the first time, but there's a question that then this is where the board needs to kind of weigh in. And again, this is your decision. Do you want to do that at the first reading so that the public gets it before you have a chance to get it, to be able to look at it? And so I think this is a fair compromise. I think it gives the community an opportunity to comment and then go forward. The other question that kind of comes up, and we don't address it here, but as we're going through policies, it's the board's prerogative kind of under our public comment section to say, look, we have a general public comment at the very beginning, but the board can still, if they want to, solicit feedback around policies. And so, you know, if people want to, after the first reading, solicit feedback, and again, it's not necessarily a question and answer period, but it might be a thought that someone shares that the board would consider before they make the final vote.
Sure.
And so this flow chart, I can adjust. This is me just taking some ideas and Ryan making it look better than what my, you know, hand scratch looked like. But trying to be as transparent as we can with the community to let them know what it looks like. Also, what I would like to do when we finish the new board's webpage, I would like to have this be a tab there so people could say, you know, and to me, I'm a very simple person, but I think of the, you know, the Saturday morning cartoon, I'm just a bill, I'm only a bill, like how does a bill become a law, that type of thing? This is what the thought process was. How does a policy become, you know, effective? And so once that second meeting happens, it becomes effective immediately. But just trying to take people through the steps as to what happens so there's some clarity around that because this is one of the three major components and roles of the board. I would love to create some conversation and have some feedback for me and I will do whatever the board wishes.
Yeah, I like the idea of having this chart, a flow chart. I would just say, under the policy committee, you verbally indicated, you know, the fact that not only is it three board members, but it's also district staff administrators, a school nurse, and possibly or other stakeholders that make up the group. So maybe in that first purple bubble, policy committee, just kind of in.
Just add who's, okay.
Yep.
Gotcha. Perfect.
And I would support posting the information at the second reading, not at the first meeting because I feel like the first meeting is a lot of times where the whole board is hearing the report from the policy committee for the first time. And so the public can listen to that, but then get the supporting documents and the changes that were made for the second meeting, I think.
And we would still have that policy present at the meeting. So like, it would be in the paper form, but it would be, so tonight, all the policies are having a second reading are on that table.
Right, yes.
Here they are, so people have access to them.
But they also get access to them with the agenda and ahead of time because they're posted the Friday before.
That would be, that's up to, if you want to do that on the, for the second reading.
The second reading.
They'd come to the meeting, the paper copies of the first reading would be there, but then it's not till the second meeting when.
We can do either, but that's really kind of the question because legally, we have to post the agenda. We don't necessarily have to post the supporting material, but I think we want to be as transparent as possible. But at the same time, I think, you know, you know, how would you like to share, you know, to share that information? Is really kind of the question.
Yeah. I like the idea of a paper copy at the first reading available to all mainly because it's really hard if you don't have something to look at to follow along and to see the highlighted areas that we're actually considering making updates to and why. It's, I, that would be a little bit difficult, I think, if you didn't have something to look at, at least for our public to be able to follow along. But then I really, I totally agree that the second reading and having it available online along with the agenda makes a lot of sense. And then maybe a few copies, obviously, print copies.
Yeah, 100%.
Sounds like a lot of paper, honestly. So that's a little bit of a concern, but, you know, maybe we don't need 25 of them.
I just want to be as transparent as we can. And I think the question is a valid one. If we want people to be involved in the process, what's the entry point?
Yeah, right.
What does that look like? And how do people, you know, have informed questions? They need an opportunity to digest the material and be able to understand it and raise questions about it. Now, the question is, you know, say there's a second reading and there's some, some great points are made. The board can, you know, say no to the policy and we can put, to be able to have more conversation about that or send it back to the policy committee. So like, there isn't that pressure that you have to approve something.
Exactly.
So I think, you know, there is that, there is that opportunity where we can take that feedback.
Yeah, because especially if we're only getting public comment mostly after first time. That makes a lot of sense to have an opportunity that if the questions are, you know, interesting and valid and of concern, that we would need maybe some more discussion.
I would say that, you know, in the first part of the meeting, that, you know, when we open to public comment, to just have a caveat there that if anyone would like to, you know, give some feedback in regards to the policies being discussed today, that they would give the opportunity during that timeframe versus one after the other just to condense the comments.
So we could add that right to the signup sheet if you wanted to, just saying this would include any comments regarding policies.
Sure.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So do they have to, they don't have to do that ahead of time?
They have to sign it. People have public comment, they would sign in ahead of time.
Ahead of time, okay.
And that's how that would happen, yes.
Yep.
Can I get clarification on when the comment, the public comments would be made after second, well, I shouldn't say after second reading. So would those comments be made at the beginning of our meeting in our normal public comment time? Where you, I think what you just said is we could also, as we're talking about that particular policy, open it up for any last comments.
Certainly can, you know, and I think, you know, as we kind of go through, you know, the opportunity for public comment, there's a sentence in here that basically says, you know, the board reserves the right to manage accordingly. So if there's a public, if there's a policy that people have questions about and you know that, then certainly want to say like, if there's a question or certainly you can open up that field. But that's the decision of the board to do that. So I don't necessarily know that you'd want to do that every time, but there might be an opportunity if people raise their hand that, you know, that would be up to the board to manage that.
It might make more sense, actually, for a public commenter who wishes to address a policy to, at this, in the public comments section to say, I'd like to address a policy when we get to it. So that that comment can be made at the time that the board is delivering that policy.
On the signup sheet, they'd be able to kind of put that and then you would know when to call on them.
Yeah, that's a bad idea.
That's awesome.
Yep, yep.
All right, cool. So what I'm hearing is I have some minor changes on this. I think the general format, we're in agreement about. We're going to have to do some work. How do we post things? Well, we'll figure that part out. It might be like a link with a Google Doc to go to someplace else, but that's, you know, it would kind of be maybe a scan of everything that's there. You know, we'll figure that out and Elaine will have to work through that. But that allows that information to be out there so that people have an opportunity to look at that and ask questions.
Excellent.
And inform themselves. Does this make sense to everybody?
Thank you for putting so much attention to this because I know that there's been a lot of confusion.
100%, and I think.
And honestly, I'm being educated also all the time with all of this, so this is really helpful.
Well, I think that there's, with the public comment to the board changing, that's created another layer of confusion for things. And so on top of that, you know, it's really important that you are as transparent as you can be and be able to share the information so people, you know, the work's done, that people can understand what you're doing and have the information so they can follow along. And so this is really an opportunity to kind of bring those two things together. And I think it was a fantastic question, a valid point. It's something that, you know, I wasn't sure about. You know, this is the way, it's kind of one of those things that this is the way we've always done it.
Right. It was like just the protocol that we just went along with, but yeah, it was a better way to do things.
And I did get clarity. There's no legal guidelines that say you can't do it or you must do it. It's really, that's the discretion of the board to be able to do that. So I think that if this is what you'd like to do, I'll go forward with this.
Thank you.
As our draft's around, you can do the updates around the changes around identifying who might be a part of that committee. And then I will be able to, as we kind of build the website, you know, with the website idea being as transparent as we can, this will be part of that for help people.
That's great. Can you talk about that a little bit, the plan, like what we're doing with this webpage for the board?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've had the same format for years with our webpage. And Heather asked a great question and she said, there's no page for the board. And I was like, well, now there's a page for the board. And I'm like, oh my gosh, there isn't. There's a page that says, here's the members of the board and here's the agendas and here's the policy, but there's nothing that ties it all together.
Right.
And so we're going to have a subcommittee of people that are going to get together with our communications person to be able to look at that. I've done some kind of pre-work of just things in my head that I think might be important. And then how do we organize things in a fashionable way or in a way that, you know, it makes sense? What I don't want to have, if those of you who've been on the website on a regular basis, I do not like the scroll down method. I want to have like links that, you know, on the sides that say, if you want this, click this. And then it just takes you to this. I don't want people to have to scroll down. I mean, I, you know, our agendas get confusing that way sometimes. So how do we make this, you know, more clear for public and easier to use? You can spend a lot of time just trying to find information, which can be really frustrating. So let's try to find a way to make it concise, like, you know, what is the strategic plan? Boom, push the button. What's the mission statement? Push the button. I think the mission statement we would have on the opening page. But anyway, those types of information that we're talking about. So that's the work that we're doing. I hope that we can have that up by December-ish, at least a draft. And obviously, it's going to evolve and it can get better. But we'll get some feedback. And I just think, again, I'm just trying to be, this is what the board does. This is the work that we have to do. Here's a lot of questions that we get. Let's be clear with people.
I know the committee is trying to get together in the next, literally, the next week. And Joe, I actually had a thought that I'm, I'm out of town, but that doesn't mean that I can't do a Zoom like in the morning on Thursday. Or not Thursday, that's graduation for Jack, but Friday or Saturday, I could, not Saturday. We don't work on Saturday. Nobody works on Saturday. We're talking about Friday, though, could be a possibility, which I hadn't thought about.
Zoom, Zoom with a screen share would be perfect.
Yeah.
Just the nature of the work is, it's very much.
Just thought I'd throw that out there because I know it's, I keep pushing it, so.
And App to G has a, I'm going to use the word sandbox, where you can create like draft pages. And you can, you know, the down, the one downfall of App to G, and it's just is what it is, is there certain formats that you have to follow because their format also goes to the app. And so there's some limitations that way, but I think, you know, Jeremy Poole is someone that we, that's one of our technology people who's really kind of, this is part of his responsibilities to help us with this. And so he's going to kind of put that together. And I just, just trying to be helpful, kind of say, hey, look, at first blush, here are 10 things that I think might, we want to consider and just put that out, maybe 10 more. But I just, I just wanted to be able to at least, here's some stuff that I think we get a lot of questions about. So anyway, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You missed one thing?
Oh, I got one more. Yep, no. And so just clarity and something just hit me in the hallway as we were walking in here. I think it's important that we use the auditorium, obviously, that people can spread out. But we have a board meeting on the 17th. And so prior to that board meeting, we were going to have our board workshop with Rollinsford. And that's typical, that's part of our agreement with Rollinsford to kind of get some feedback and have some conversations around where we are, where we're going to go, what our relationship looks like. That's typical. The curveball that kind of got thrown into this as I was walking in here today is that that's the midst of the district musical time.
Oh.
So my question would be, and maybe we can work it out, but if we had to move the board meeting a little bit earlier than seven o'clock, could we do that to avoid, what I don't want to do is make sure that the kids can't have the auditorium at all that evening. So would the board be open to me having some flexibility around possibly meeting at six rather than seven, if that helps? And we'll, you know, we'll do some work together.
Whatever works for the children, I think, in our space.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yep, yeah.
Okay. And I will obviously make sure that when we post it, we'll put it on the websites, make sure people are aware of it. We'll, you know, make sure the signs are updated, so. Okay. All right. Annabelle?
Hey, guys. Trevor is not here today, but he wrote the sports report for me because he is much more well-informed than I am when it comes to that. So this is from Trevor in spirit. "We are starting to see the end of the regular season and the beginning of playoff games for fall sports teams. We have boys soccer playing Noble at home in the first round of playoffs this Friday at four. They ended the regular season with an 11 to 2 to 1 record and is currently fourth seed out of 17. We have girls soccer playing Portland at home in the first round of playoffs at one on Saturday. They ended the season 7-5 to 2 and are the seventh seed. Cross country has regionals at 12:20 at Twin Brooks this Saturday. Volleyball plays Cheverus at 11 a.m. home on Saturday for the first round of playoffs. Regular season ended with an 11 to 3 record. Football is away in Kennebunk on Friday at 6:30 and they are currently 4 to 2. Girls field hockey began their game at 6:30 this evening away at Falmouth. They're currently the 12th seed after a 3 to 11 record. As for non-sport-related, Marshwood student activities. Sophomores and juniors took the PSATs a week and a half ago. Niwa testing for juniors is next week on Wednesday. Matilda tickets are on sale, $10 online, 12 at the door. The link for tickets and more info is on the website. School-wide survey took place today. There were 110 questions about students' personal lives to gather data for the state, and this was anonymous. And students had the option to not fill out all of the questions or just not fill it out at all. Seniors will receive their write-up form in the next week or so from the yearbook committee. Student Gov had their first in-person meeting and discussed certain committees, such as the wellness committee and the green committee. The exec board, the executive board members for student Gov this year are Ali Aragoni, she is the senior president, Eva Therian, she is the junior president. And as for the other members, Trevor Wasney, myself, Sarah Place, Caroline Hammond, and Addie Fuller."
Annabelle, we had a conversation during our workshop. And our workshop is really focused around the strategic plan. And I would love to sit down with you and Trevor at some point and talk a little bit about maybe incorporating a strategic plan into your conversations and your comments. I think that would be, it might be a great vehicle to talk about those different areas and getting some student feedback on that area. You know, I love kind of the updates, but I would really love to kind of dive in a little bit, some other stuff. We had some conversation around what they might look like going forward. So maybe over the next few weeks, you and I and Trevor can sit down and possibly.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, Ms. Decker can sit down. So just have some conversation. So this is some good work. I think we've kind of got some good steps. But it might be really good, maybe if we can start to try to vary a little bit around, hey, let's talk about engagement, student voice, let's talk about those types of things.
All right, sounds good.
Awesome.
Quick question, quick question for you. Just to clarify, so is there a prom scheduled? And is it for junior and senior or like, what's the deal on all that?
Senior prom is November 10th. Seniors can invite lower grades and they have to fill out a form that they can, that can be found in the office. And they can also invite people who have previously graduated or go to different schools. So yes, it is occurring on November 10th. It is senior strictly only and the junior class officers have met. I do not know if they discussed, or they're going to meet. I do not know if they're discussing junior prom yet, but that will hopefully be a topic of discussion coming from a junior myself.
There you go. So the seniors have like a special banquet in the spring, is that right?
It's part of the graduation.
Oh, and that happens as well?
Yes, I believe so.
So their senior prom is in place.
It's already on the calendar at the Red Barn.
Oh, I saw it.
The senior prom is in place because they didn't get a junior prom last year. So typically, they don't have a senior prom.
Oh, they do, okay.
And the current juniors will have their prom in the springtime is the goal.
Most likely, yes, if we can get the money for it.
I'm sure we'll figure it out. Okay, well, thank you very much, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have had no correspondence upon which to report, so that brings us to the report of the committees. Already been mentioned is the advisory committee that we are standing up to look at the website to, to bulk up the, the board section. Facilities, excuse me, financing facilities met earlier this evening, and Heather, you were gonna give us a report.
Yeah, sure thing. So, it's all looking good. So, we're in a little bit of the red, only because we covered all of our lease payments. So, all that money went out, so we won't have any more lease payments moving forward. We also had a good chunk come out for three district placements that came out of the, the budget. And also, we haven't received yet the, I think it's one point three million subsidy money that will be coming in, in the next couple of weeks, I believe. So, that's where, so we're exactly where we should be right now, it's all looking good. Marshwood Middle School, the mold is taken care of. The building was sprayed with a special sealant, sealant, and that's just like typically done, I guess, with brick, to keep the moisture out. So, and there's plans to do that to the other brick building, I think Elliott School.
Every, once every year.
Once every year.
To, to try to get, you know, of the, create a rotation where every year we, we seal those bricks across, we've done this, we did this building this last year, the middle school this year, and then we'll try to carry down the, I'm not looking forward, as I said, to the steeple at the Great Works School, that is gonna be interesting. Sorry, I was getting that down, but that's a, that's another.
So, it's one building per year?
Per year, that's the goal, just to try to get on a rotation, just to, you know, it just, you know, it does take quite a bit of time to do it, so.
So, if you notice that fancy lift in the middle school parking lot, that's why that was there, was to help the workers spray the building. The French drains are done over at the middle school, which is good. The next step will be Great Works School in the back of the school, there'll be a little bit of drainage work done there. Therefore, the big tent will be coming down to accommodate the workers. We're down two drivers and down one, two, one trip driver, so if you know anyone that's interested in being a bus driver, it's a great gig, great perks, and reach out to the.
Heather Webster.
Heather Webster, our director of transportation. And we also have a trainer available for those trip drivers, too, so you get your training all in one. I think that's it, unless I missed something important.
Just a brief update on the, on the food service stuff. The Chartwell's contract is, is, is coming due, and we're picking up the process shortly to, to go out for bids. We, we hired a food service manager at the middle school to backfill the person from Chartwell's who had, who had retired. So, that, that was a good save. Yeah, that, that was pretty much it, thank you. Excellent. Next up is the Ed Policy Committee. We have several second readings on our agenda tonight. Has the committee met since our last?
Next, next week.
So, the, the next meeting is, there it is, Wednesday, October twenty-seventh. So, we'll do our second readings under new business. Likewise, on the Wellness Committee, Social Emotional Learning, that next meeting is scheduled for November third, is that right? So, there's nothing of which to report tonight. Okay, very good. That brings us then to the new business section, and the first few things we'll do here are the second readings of those policies that we talked about in our last meeting. So, can we start, please? May I have a motion to approve the second reading of IJJ?
I move we approve the second reading and discussion of policy IJJ, instructional and library media materials selection.
I second, Heather?
Heather, thank you. Second reading, no changes from the first reading, any comments or questions?
The big ideas were that to pass that, we could go down, that the board would approve that, or the board allows the superintendent to make that decision, and working with my staff and with building principals to be able to do that. This is, this does the latter. Also talks about, you know, that kind of five-year turnover of making sure that texts are relevant, and we also made some slight changes just with the materials being supplemented in the event that maybe a text might have some valid information, but we still could, you know, bring outside information into the offside that there might be, that might be outdated, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor? That is five oh, thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, with regard to IJJ dash E one?
I move to approve the second reading and discussion of policy IJJ dash E one, challenge of instructional materials form.
I'll second, Lisa.
Okay, this is just the changes to the form, they were minor.
Yes, the, the big change to this form was this really kind of talking about the internet digital resources that are out there, and being able to have a specific check-off for that. There still is the other form, and then if you look at, at the bottom of the form, we really kind of wanted to go with more of an open response, rather than what do you want to have happen, just talk about what would you recommend, and be able to allow people to be able to get some feedback on that, rather than just checking a box. I think we'd get more valuable information that way. Makes sense. Questions, comments? All in favor? That is five oh, thank you very much.
May I have a motion, please, with regard to JKA A?
I move to approve the second reading and discussion of policy JKA A dash R, use of physical restraint and seclusion procedure.
I'll second, Jen.
May I comment on this briefly?
Please.
And so, this was our best information that we had a month ago, and so, my recommendation would be that we would still go through this policy updated accordingly. There has been some wrangling between the interpretation of the law and what the Department of Education, how they interpret it, so there might be some changes coming to this policy. You know, it did become law on Monday, so I think it's important that we have the policy on the, on the books, I think it's important. But the interpretation may change slightly, and so, I just, you know, you might say, John, I think we just did this a month ago, and there's a reason for that, but there's, there's some, some things going on right now with some interpretation issues that need to be ironed out.
That makes sense, but better to have it, as you said.
Absolutely, the law is still in effect as of now, you know, as of now.
Okay, comments or questions? All in favor? That is five oh, thank you very much.
And this is an example of a policy where German Woods and Richard asked and said, here's a change in law, we need to look at this policy to make sure it aligns, you know, the most current information, so.
May I have a motion, please, with regards to JKA A dash R?
I move we approve the second reading and discussion of policy JKA A dash R, use of physical restraint and seclusion procedure. So, pass on with the policy of this.
Yes. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry, I'll second, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. Any comments or questions about the procedural argument?
May I just make a, a brief comment?
Please.
As we go forward, the definition of intimate serious physical risk, that, that's, that's gonna be what the legal standard for that is. You know, that's a, that's gonna be some of the work that we need to be able to get some clarity around, and I think that might be some of the questions that are out there right now. And so, we'll, you know, obviously, we'll get more clarity going forward, but just, you know, there is some terminology in here that we want to be mindful of. And it's not like you, you, you know the extremes, but you just don't, you don't know the other side. You know, there, there, like, where is that line, when it becomes?
Yeah.
One and not the other, so I think we need to be clear.
For sure. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Five oh, thank you. And that brings us to JLCD A dash E one.
I move we approve the second reading and discussion of policy JLCD A dash E one, medical marijuana parent provider request form to administer at school.
I'll second, Jen.
Jen, thank you. This is just an update to the form.
That's correct, there's two, two changes, the addition of the physician's assistant, and then also designated primary caregiver terminology being taken out of.
To be more consistent with the current law.
That's correct.
Yep, makes sense. Questions, comments? All in favor? Five oh, thank you very much. Brings us to the last piece of new business, which is the, a motion, please, to approve the reading and discussion of the board bylaws.
I move to approve the reading and discussion of the board bylaws.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Who wants it?
Heather.
Okay, second, Heather. Yeah, I'm really glad that we all work so collaboratively to update this. I think it, it's really solid and job well done, everyone.
Thank you.
For the benefit of those listening, who cares, the, the two major changes we made, and they're not even that major. Well, we did update the, the section that deals with the mission statement. We have fleshed that out based on a view by this current board of, you know, what has certainly was gone on under the pandemic conditions. But it, it's much more associated or aimed at the whole student, the whole person. I, I think that's a wonderful improvement. So, that is incorporated. And then the second change, there was a section that dealt with how the board appoints or elects members to the various standing committees. It has been board practice for a number of years now that we take the nominations for all of those standing committees and then vote on them all at once. So, the language in the bylaws has been changed to reflect that each one of those committees' memberships gets voted on by the board, rather than this one gets voted on, this one gets appointed by the chair. That's the other major change that I can remember.
And we went from two to three, just made three board members for each committee across the board.
Yes.
And we also added the Wellness SEL Committee as a standing committee, which it was not previously officially. I mean, it was, but it wasn't.
And legally should have been.
And should have been by law, right.
Important change, for sure, yes. All right, any comments or questions?
Can I just, yes, please. So, once, if this is approved, what will happen next is that we'll then have to go back and see if there was any policies that, that were impacted by the change in language in this. And so, that will kind of be the next step that I'll ask Theresa to start to, to look into, so just so you understand.
Excellent.
So, what is the next step with this? So, if we all agree that it's good as is, then what's on the website would get updated?
Will change, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? That's five oh, we have new bylaws. Thank you. That brings us to the building administrator check-in. Who wishes to go first? We have the high school and the middle school tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you again for the opportunity to share with you some things that are happening at the middle school. The NWEA testing has been, the window for us is October fourth through October twenty-ninth, so we have been having that testing going on embedded within our normal school day, so that will conclude at some point next week. Due to the fact that we have our NWEA testing during October, we chose as a school to move our main integrated youth health survey that someone had asked about earlier to November twelfth, that's a Friday. So, by the guidelines provided to us, we should have at least two weeks' notice, so information regarding that survey is gonna go out at the end of this week, with the appropriate, you know, if you want to opt in or opt out, all that kind of communication will happen at the end of this week. And then, obviously, anybody who has questions, please feel free to give us a call at the high school, excuse me, at the middle school. Cindy Travers is the coordinator for that, but I want to remind the board that I know in the past, we've had Sally Mananen, the director of Choose to be Healthy Coalition and Community Health from York Hospital, she'll come and work with us again like she has in the past. We'll break down that data, that data will be shared with the community, it'll be shared with the board, whenever you think it's appropriate. So, we plan to use that data as it's been used in the past. You know, we've had a lot of conversations at the beginning of this year, and I've made general comments about the focus that we've had. You know, Superintendent Cavali talks about the district's focus on connections before content, but I think we haven't taken a deep dive into what that means at some of our schools, and I wanted to just share a couple of things that I think are nice highlights for you and the community to be aware of. From day one, we have been working on building relationships, making connections, and we've had a focus on our climate and our culture. And I think one of the things that permeates our work is, we believe, yes, there are spring board events, major things that we can do that can set off some of this work, but it's really the day-to-day work we do. It's the relationships and connections, and for those of you who have had any training when it comes to suicide prevention, or anti-bullying, or anything that we face in our schools at times, it starts with the relationships you build and the connections you have with students and with their families. And so, that's something we focused on at the middle school. When that foundation is play, in place, and schools are a safe place for kids, and students feel like they've got connections and caring adults that they can trust and go to, some of the things that they face on a day-to-day basis are mitigated, because they have people they can talk to, people they can trust, and resources for them. So, we focus on that from day one, and I think our staff has done a wonderful job. But I wanted to highlight a few things that I had mentioned at the beginning. For me, it's always been, adults have great ideas, but student-led initiatives are always so powerful. So, I wanted to share with you a few of the things we have. First of all, from a curriculum standpoint, Cindy Travers does a wonderful job. Grade six, seven, and eight all have different aspects of students' growth that are highlighted. So, we have it embedded in our curriculum each year, and students are required to take those health courses. There's a myriad of things that we do, but it really is talking about healthy living and making healthy choices, and talking about the different progressions that a student is going through as they grow in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So, it's a part of our curriculum, and it's something they learn every day, but here's some of the groups that we have in place and some of the work they do. Our civil rights team, led by Renee Cavali and Caitlin Williams, they're working on making sure that our school is an inclusive place. You know, they normalize conversations about the six categories. They're highlighting contributions people are making, and they're just trying to make people feel safe to be in school and celebrate diversity. Our National Junior Honor Society is also taking steps like that, too. They're honoring our veterans and first responders. They're holding benefits to fundraisers to benefit local people that have those needs, and they're finding creative ways to highlight all the positive things that are being in school, being done in school. Same type of work is happening with our student council, but one thing that's, I think, a great highlight for us, I happened to be walking down the hallway yesterday, and Stephanie Thompson of the student council, and the students saw me walk by, and they said, well, we were just gonna come down and talk to you, can you come in for a minute? And these students have started an initiative that I've worked on in two other schools, and I don't know if you've heard of this, but it's called the Yellow Tulip Project. And about five or six years ago, I was fortunate enough to hear Julia Hansen, who is the person who began all this, she's a student, who lost two friends through suicide and was dealing with depression herself, and she created the Yellow Tulip Project. The Yellow Tulip Project focuses on two things. One is erasing that stigma about mental health, that you can't talk about it. And that's one of the hu, one of the huge benefits to this work is talking about mental health issues, talking about what students are facing on a day-to-day basis. As I mentioned before, having those relationships where they feel safe to do it. But the other powerful piece to their work is hope. And when Julia Hansen spoke in front of me, and other principals at this conference that I was at, her vision of creating a place where students feel like they can celebrate hope, those little things that are done every day that make you know people care about you, and those acts of kindness. Well, why this is so exciting for me is, students brought this to me, this is their idea. This is something that they want to grab a hold of, and they want to make possible in our school. And so, one of the things you'll see in the spring is, they're gonna plant two hundred yellow tulips around the flagpole in the front. And in the spring, when that, hopefully, when, if we have the type of winter we, we should have, when that blossoms, that's a, a hope garden. And throughout the year, there'll be all kinds of displays in the school, symbolizing hope, and the little things that we do to, to, to celebrate each other. So, just a few examples, I, I think we don't honor and celebrate what our students and staff are doing on a daily basis in these areas, and I wanted to share that with you and share it with our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Creech, did you say Stephanie Thompson was the advisor for that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say how much I just appreciate that update, Mr. Creech. It's, it's so timely, incredibly timely right now, particularly these last couple of weeks, and I think we, Jen and I have been talking about hope a lot, so it's just interesting. I think that's definitely a key, very key word right now in terms of all of our needs, but in particular, our students. Thank you so much, it's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, good to see everyone tonight, and I'm gonna echo some of the themes, which I think is great to hear, because October, even in the normal circumstances, is usually when people start to kind of settle a little bit, and a little bit of the, the wall comes up, and students have been in school for five or six weeks, and, and they're kind of used to the routine. This year has been really, really unique, we've been riding a little bit of a wave, and I think we're on a little bit of a upswing in some regards. So, I'm gonna share a couple of the important dates, supply some con- So I'm gonna share a couple of the uh important dates, supply some context with it. And then I said, you know, echo a couple of themes that we that we just heard. We did have our PSAT, as was mentioned, for sophomores and juniors. That was October thirteenth. Uh October is a very busy month. We uh today had our youth risk um survey, the M R Y H S. And the reason that was really important this year, it's biennial, and it's just a lucky coincidence uh because strategically, we're trying to gather as much information as we can on student needs because we're in a perpetual state of programming and and reviewing their needs. So that's going to be great data. Uh we're doing that during one of our new structures designed specifically for things like this and to give additional time for the whole student during our Hawk Block. So our advisors delivered that, and our students were great about um participating. But as I said, the context behind that is, boy, timely data that will need to be in a perpetual state of reviewing and um reimagining and creating programming. And then NIWA is uh next Wednesday. That will be for the third-year high school students. And quite frankly, that's kind of the academic equivalent of the M R Y H S, giving us some uh chance to measure some progress. It'll be delivered in the fall and the spring. So as I said, when we look back to our planning and trying to be uh strategic about this year, we had circled a couple of dates on the calendar. Students will be back, we'd hit that month of October, we'd be able to, you know, get a rhythm of the building. And then we have two really important data points to to use for continued um support of the students. And as, you know, Principal Creech said, it's really been great to move around the school. As far as teaching and learning, the classrooms are beginning to find their rhythm. We asked a lot during the summer, what's it gonna look like when the students come back? It's been nineteen, almost twenty months of uh not maybe having the structure that they're used to and things that are familiar. And as I said, there was this great little honeymoon, virtual hugging in the hallways of, isn't it great to have everyone back? And then it was like, whoa, this feels a little different. I used to be on my couch by now. So it's been this really fascinating time of getting that rhythm. But if you go into the classrooms now, you can feel the energy, you can feel some normalcy coming back. Uh distance group work is occurring brilliantly as they use hallways. And so it's just really nice because I think teachers are getting a sense of how to recalibrate. Students are coming back, and it's and it's been really wonderful. I mention that because we're getting back in the classroom as much as possible because it's been a virtual classroom. So as administrators, um we're finally always into classrooms uh daily, and it's been great. A quick aside, but connected, on October eighth, we had a professional development and the multi-tiered system of support was kind of resurrected. We've started some work prior to the pandemic, and that's just gonna be great work. And what that is, is really just kind of a a mindfulness, an approach. We keep saying we have to meet students where where they are. The pandemic has readjusted how they're coming back to us, so we'll be resurrecting some work around that. We began a team at the high school. We'll be doing a kind of a gap analysis or a needs assessment for what we need to do to implement that with fidelity. And basically, what that is, folks, is is just being able to um individualize, personalize a little bit, differentiate what should be part of your good practice, but even more so as we return from the pandemic. So that's um exciting. And it's finding the balance of teachers are really, really working as hard as they can. We do need to commit some time to some of these uh initiatives, and the teacher's been really great about committing. Couple last few things, just the extracurriculars, 'cause I think that's also a really uh really relevant measurement. Uh we're seeing higher-than-usual participation, which is great. Our civil rights team is just really starting to draw folks in. And that's only a couple of years for us at the high school, and it's really been a a powerful place for students to find voice. Um our interact club, I think they're looking for a place for forty or fifty students to meet on a Thursday morning. So that's wonderful. Our art club is, you know, heading into the thirties and forties. It's just, as I said, it's a great measurement, and it's a sign, I think, of uh of students really anxious to connect in in different ways. So our extracurriculars and specifically some of those clubs are really showing some growth. Uh another quick one, as I said, in the spirit of what Principal Creech showed, I was able to meet with some students who want to resurrect peer tutoring, uh which is fantastic because as we use our Hawk Block more for intervention, we wanna create little learning centers around the school. Some of them can be peer tutored, some of them can be staffed by our ed techs. So as I said, it's, there was a lot of planning that went in. We were using about five or six weeks of data to really assess needs and what it really looks and feels like. And then we're just in this perpetual state of growth, and it's both um from staff and students. Real quickly, as I mentioned, our advisory Hawk Block, as you know, we increased the amount of time advisory. We built in a little flex period, and we continue to use this time to address the whole student. A couple of examples, um some are as simple as a survey about how was homecoming? Uh because we did it differently this year, and it's just kind of this baby step toward student voice and and ownership. Uh another thing that we did during one of the Hawk Blocks, there was a viewing of a a video during um the week of October tenth, I believe. And it really uh led to some discussions where a survey was uh put out relative to um how you feel, if you feel like you uh have a voice in the school, and there are questions around, um do you see yourself, you know, represented in society fairly? So we're just starting to lay the groundwork for some bigger discussions, and that survey data is gonna be shared back with students. Uh and the discussion will go from there. So it's really been, the new infrastructure's been uh helpful. And uh last but not least, during that, um we also led the students through a academic inventory, a self-assessment of where they are halfway through the quarter. So we're halfway through the quarter, and in our return, how are you doing? What are your needs? And then from there, we'll be able to build out some interventions going further. So as I said, it's been a fantastic ride. There was a little honeymoon, then we hit the wall. Now I think we're in a little bit of an upswing uh as we head toward, you know, I can't believe I'm saying that already, but head toward November. So that's what's occurring. And the prom, yes, the the class of two thousand twenty junior prom will occur November tenth. And fingers crossed that that was a cam we kicked down the road, but now this year's junior, we're
Yeah.
rolling out what hopefully will be a normal senior and a normal junior spring. But who's rushing?
Thanks, Rob. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
And um thank you to the soundbox up there in the back, the mic reminder um photos were super helpful.
Good.
You know, I bet sometimes it's so hard to hear other people, and I know that I just kind of shout in the microphone, but this is a great reminder, so thank you.
Anybody on the board have anything else randomly? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Kate's not here. You're up, Heather.
Me too. Adjourned?
I'll second.
That was, I'm sorry.
Jen.
Jen, thank you.
Heather and Jen.
All in favor? That is five oh. We are adjourned.